Well, they called a meeting in order for April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We stopped the pledge.
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 To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, more both sides?
Yep.
Prove the agenda?
You you do prove the agenda for April sixteenth?
Seconded.
All our favor. I'm going to the last meeting. I'll make a motion we approve the amendments for April second.
Seconded.
All our favor, favor. Tom, I assure you the weekly update.
Okay, so the first thing that we need to do is set a public hearing date for the June tenth election. And we're going to recommend Wednesday, May seventh, which is probably on my calendar here. So it'd be during one of your meetings, we'd start it right at six o'clock. The way that we have it, remember, based on our last meeting, the only question is going to be the sheriff's question at this point. So we're required to have a a public hearing. So May seventh works?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Um, next is to let you know that Ed and I and John, the transfer station superintendent, um, are going to be meeting with Waste Management on April thirtieth at nine o'clock. Um, Ed does have a vacation that's been planned for some time, so we're going to table the, um, transfer station. I don't want to do it next week while he's out. Um, but we have, based on the last meeting, there was a lot of questions regarding Waste Management that the board wanted to get answered since it was a new company. Um, we thought, I think it was that idea that it was better suited in person. So we've invited him and the three of us will go through all the questions. So that's going to be coming up. We do have an alternate position to the planning board and an alternate position to the zoning board that we need filled. So anybody interested in either one of those positions, please let me know. Uh, speaking of zoning board, we did receive an application that find, uh, the fee has been paid. So on May eighth, we will be having a zoning board hearing. Uh, Lenkowski will be here to represent the town and to, um, work with the zoning board in regards to the, um, process. It's pretty well laid out in the zoning ordinance. Usually the first meeting we always have him present to just make sure everybody understands, you know, legally what they can and can't do. So that's going to be on May eighth. I received a little blurb and we're just going to read you, um, regarding the certi- the cert training that recently happened. Um, New York County Emergency Management is now offers offering Community Emergency Response Team class to those interested in assisting their communities before, during, and after a disaster. The class covers such topics as disaster preparedness, certification organization, disaster medical operations, shelter operations, animal shelters, fire safety, utility controls, light search and rescue, and terrorism. Anyone interesting, interested in a cert class can reach out to Phil Caruso. Um, tonight, we would like to recognize five members of the community that have taken this. Uh, it was three and a half weeks, they've gotten certification, they've all passed. Uh, they are Hope Denikamp, Tammy Crumpets, Phil Caruso, Ray Lopez, and Dan Crumpets. So we thank them for their, um, time and effort to get certified. Um, Phil is, uh, trying to find more volunteers as well. Um, but thank you to them for giving their time and doing that.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful that they're volunteering their time. And I don't know about you, I feel, I feel like this has been a great effort, this whole area.
Yeah.
Uh, to take, just to get this kind of attention. Uh, Phil's done a wonderful job and we got these volunteers and it feels like we're on a good path now.
Yeah, and he's going to be coming in to meet with you guys and then chat with the briefly at town meeting. He's going to be coming in, uh, towards the end of the month to chat with the full board.
Awesome. I know, uh, Acton had four people in the class that finished last night. York only had one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so I think we have eight people in town that have been certified.
Cool.
Nice.
Yeah, I think he's done a lot of work in a short amount of time and he's gotten people excited and given them opportunities to do Acton just best, which is to engage and support our community.
You know, uh, it it's just interesting, we have, uh, so many committees and activities like this that demonstrate the extent to which people, uh, really put themselves out to volunteer and participate in town government. Um, it it does seem that for some of our committees, uh, we aren't necessarily getting that kind of, uh, initiative. And I'm not quite sure why that is, but that's something at some point in the future we should talk about. Understand if there are issues or constraints that are causing people not to come forward, I'd like to understand what those are.
Yeah.
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 Something anonymous that we put it out there, they may want, they may give you more input than you ever realized.
There's opportunities for anonymous surveys, you can feedback, you know, to the information. Even even exit interviews, people who do leave for whatever various reasons.
Yeah. Because I think there's plenty of people out there that really want to be involved and maybe there's an impediment for them and we ought to understand what it is and try to get it out of the way.
I agree.
Good point. Um, so now the town meeting is behind us. Um, I wanted to, just a couple of things, um, primarily, uh, the snow plowing contract, because I know that was one of the things that fired. The ambulance is on the agenda a little, um, further down, but, um, David, regarding the snow plowing contract, what is the first thing that you would like me to do? Do you want me to gather from surrounding towns, a little bit?
So, I mean.
What's step one?
Uh, what I would do is, um, ask Alfred Sanford and Chapley for their contracts.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I think what we can do is look at all of them, you know, I know them, but if you take them all and you kind of merge it. And and I talked to Will, uh, we've already talked about, I guess it was a little contention there at the, uh, town meeting, which I missed because of the violent snow. Um, and, uh, but, uh, I have spoken with him and explained to him that, you know, we're going to, obviously, he, we want him involved because he's going to be in the road commission, he's the one who's going to force things that aren't getting done, whether or not. He's got the contractor, no, we've got to figure all that out. But, uh, he will be involved at a certain point, but we just feel that, you know, uh, I like to head this up, obviously.
As you should.
And, um, you know, I've done multiple contracts, this is something I do.
I think that.
But if we take these contracts, I think we can merge them together. And, um, I got complaints all the time when I look at a contract, there's gray areas, I don't like gray areas. And and I don't like being liable when I don't have to be liable for something. And I I believe we could put together something here by merging them all together, make a good contract for that.
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying regarding town meeting, I mean, there was, um, you know, there were statements made regarding his involvement, but I think that, you know, in in, um, but I think that people understood once we explained that, you know, we, at the same time, we want involvement, but, you know, but you guys were elected and we're still looking out for him in case he gets the contract. I mean, how would it look if he wrote it and then was awarded it? So we're still trying to look out for him.
Really, really bad.
Right, so you know what I mean?
All you'd have to do is say, if Dave Winchester was bid on this, would you want him to write it? That probably, I'm sure, town meeting would have probably looked the other way.
But they seemed to support that once, they just had to understand why, you know, it's not that we're, we're pushing him aside, it's, you know, we're, I think the words I use is we're hoping that he is going to bid on it, you know, and so we can't let him write it.
We expected it to. He also expressed his opinion that he doesn't want to be involved in writing this.
And that's, I think that's the the right honest thing for him to say.
At the end of the day, I've done a lot of thinking, of course, with the contracts I have, there's things that I don't like about them. I know there's things he didn't like about some of the contracts that I've got. And, uh, uh, I believe, at the end of the day, it'll work for, for everybody.
I agree.
Yeah. Typically, what I would do in a situation like this is I find a counsel that has, um, uh, been at this for a while. And our counsel, they may be fine, but then, this may not be an expertise that he has. And typically, you'll find that there's a lawyer that probably has done three or four of these things. And you engage him, uh, to work with David and Will and so on. Uh, I've never written a contract in my life, uh, because I'm not a lawyer. Um, you get a lawyer to do that. And, uh, so I'm not quite sure how to find, if there is this individual or find them. My guess is there is. And I would suggest we engage counsel to do it. And then that keeps everybody, um, that, you know, there's no, no indication that anybody's pulling strings here. Counsel's going to do that, you know, I think it's great if you lead it, you know more than I do and Will and whoever else needs to be involved in this. But I think we've got to find that counsel. So when you're asking for contracts, why don't you find out who who helped them with this?
Alright, good idea. Uh, so we'll start on that and we'll start, no, we'll just.
I get, I get one of those too. Uh, new fields.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, next is just to let you know the Renaissance Fair, per your, um, request, will be at your meeting on the twenty-third to, um, next week to talk about parking and their three weekend event, um, so they're going to be before you next week. So get your questions ready.
Totally entertaining. I mean, that is the best way of their, their.
That's all I have.
Okay, then, thank you. Uh, ladies, update, Tom?
Um, not really a lot going on, I just wanted to acknowledge, um, Dan's efforts to, uh, uh, air the town meeting. I thought that was a really good thing. Uh, someone couldn't make it, they could at least keep themselves up to date with all the goings on. Um, I also thought it was great that Mark Roy was there.
Yes.
It shows the level of expertise that town has. Uh, when someone like that can stand up and, you know, just explain how it's done.
I was glad he was there for the assessment.
I think it was great and, you know, that's the kind of expertise he has in so many different areas. And it's great to have someone like that on staff. Um, and so that's all, I just wanted to note those things.
It's nice having somebody with that kind of knowledge and not be from town. Kind of unbiased.
That's right. Yeah, you can't do that.
You did a good job.
Um, Tom, just quick on the municipal finances, so I've been reaching out to probably end of the week, um, was the balance on the.
Had some cash to invest?
Yes. Moving it going the other way now, the taxes have almost entered.
Good.
Ed? Thanks. Uh, transfer station, as you heard from Jennifer, we're going to have a meeting with the Waste Management people and just to answer some questions. Tom, would you want to sit in on that meeting as well?
You know, um.
Is there anything in there that you?
Is there, if you think it would be helpful, I am happy to do it. I have, I have confidence in you guys.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I certainly appreciate the time he sits in, but I don't, I mean, the numbers are laid out and big. Yeah, I'm not sure that, I mean, not that he can add to it.
Business, to be honest with you.
They can't change, you know, they are what.
If they were business friends, I'd be happy to help.
They are, I mean, the, the numbers are what they submitted.
I'll tell you what, you get into it and you have any questions, you know how to find me.
Well, you have a good idea.
Okay. Because I think I had mentioned that once before about.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Um, yeah, so that's on that. Mary Grant, uh, the only thing I want to say there is thank the Mary Grant Committee for doing the food at town meeting. They did a decent job.
Alish.
Yeah, I didn't hear what they made.
What they had, yeah, I haven't got any reports on anything, but I think it was a great day to hear it.
Huh?
I didn't get it.
Oh, John.
No, it was good. The Murphy sandwiches were good.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah, and our, uh, my neighbor's helping neighbors does pay for the food, so that any profits they get go directly to Mary Grant, go directly to Mary Grant, so.
Yes.
Well, I know, uh, seeing I missed the meeting again, I, I appreciated having that coffee when I got there, so.
Yeah.
How many people were there?
Uh, they checked in a hundred.
A hundred?
That's good. That's great.
Um, animal control, I have nothing, so. That's all we got.
Um, fire department, I have, uh, just a note from the fire chief. Uh, the fire chief said, thank you and the board and the town administrator for all your support. I appreciate all the time and work you guys put in, I know what it's like. Thank you, and that was in response to the town meeting and the work that we've done on the warrants and with the fire department.
The salary is good.
The chief was very, very happy and wanted me to express his gratitude to the board specifically. Um, recreation committee, their next meeting is coming up April twenty-eighth. I know there's still talk, I'm trying to figure out clinicals, um, that is, as far as I know, still under discussion. Um, and then the forestry conservation committee, I attended their meeting, I think it's two weeks ago now. Um, it was, I think, all very productive, great meetings, I'm not biased. Um, they have signs, I know that they came to before the board talking about getting signs for the perimeters of, um, town properties. They've had their first batch of signs come in and the discussion was about kind of like coming up with, figure out when they're going to put them up. They also want to incorporate some sort of educational components, they kind of talked about creating like a flyer system to put on their town website and other areas just to educate people as to why the signs are up and what it means, um, but they're still in work, um, let's start working on that. And other than that, I don't have anything else left here.
Okay, great. Okay, cool. Uh, John?
Um, I don't have anything for the school department. That's been quiet, they're very appreciative that they got the vote they did the other day. Uh, planning board, uh, tomorrow night is the public hearing for the fairgrounds convenience store. So if anybody out there has an opinion one way or another, tomorrow night right here at six o'clock, there'll be a public hearing, everybody will be here for that. Everybody involved. Cemetery committee, um, spoke with somebody today that's interested in possibly joining the committee and we're trying to figure out, do we have all the members we need right now or do we need more?
That's all.
How many you got?
Well, we're, well, let me clear, clear that up a little bit. So we have, um, one individual that, um, has taken an oath that is on the committee that, uh, seems to think they're not anymore. So I think we just need to get something and writing and then that will work itself out.
Okay.
So it's not a matter of we want to increase it, we just need to work out some logistics of someone that's on there.
Wait, is there a limit?
And, I mean, it's always been a six member committee for many years, nothing, I mean, it, it's, it's always been six, we went back.
I, I don't understand why you'd have an even number.
Well, it's a cemetery committee, they don't normally, there's not a lot of, um, content.
Sure, I guess, but most committees have a odd number of them.
Yeah.
There is.
I know, we certainly could add a seventh, but we try not to have too many vacancies here and there. If this individual wants to be done and has kind of indicated that, um, we'll just replace them out.
I was under the impression that they were no longer and Jennifer let me know today that they are indeed still.
But you don't recall a resignation from that individual either, okay, so.
No, but I've also reached out to the chair if she was going to talk to the person.
Yeah.
Um, so the person that would like to join is the one that did most of the work mapping the cemeteries for the GPS for the town map.
So we expect to have an appointment for that first next week.
Hopefully.
Good. All set?
Yeah, that's all I have. Uh, municipal grounds, I'm going to try to contact Mr. Dennis this weekend.
He put his signs out, did you notice? Yeah, he put a couple of signs out on the property.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I did give, um, someone from the church came in and I gave them your cell phone number. Um, and there was some talk about adding a new memorial and I told him to start with you.
Okay, okay, yep. Same location?
Yes.
Okay.
Veterans Memorial or something else?
Something else.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, something regarding, uh, volunteers.
Alright, okay.
Okay. Um, I don't have anything on roads other than, uh, I did talk to the guys on it, it's about town road related, it's town related, I guess, one oh nine.
Oh, and how's that coming?
Um, well, as anybody knows, they drew it out through there, they're stopping goes, stopping goes. And, uh, I just talked to the individual there that's run the project and they're going to start box cutting road this coming week. So to slow the traffic down quite a bit, just let everybody know.
And how far are they going, because I see the signs, I mean, I don't ever go right, so.
They are only going to the.
So they're not.
Right at the corner of my property?
Yeah.
Last week I saw them putting the big cover there.
Yeah, so, it definitely looks different up through there.
It does. I'll take a bullet of eyes.
That, that one ditch line is pretty big, it'll slow the car up, but, uh, but no, it should be an improvement, so I just figured I'd mention that. Other than that, I do not have anything else, so we're going to go to department.
Can I come back to one other thing? Uh, when I was acknowledging people, um, such as Mark Roy and, and Dan, uh, I just would like to acknowledge Jennifer and the work that she did getting ready for this town meeting. Um, not only was just preparing for the town meeting, she was instrumental in pulling that budget together, worked very closely with the treasurer. Her knowledge really allowed us to develop that budget and extract some savings, uh, that were not inconsequential, uh, uh, this year. And, uh, having now seen what it takes to pull these things off, I have a great appreciation for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And, uh, the town's very fortunate to have you.
Thank you, Tom.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Uh, that's it, sir.
Anything else?
Andrew Staff.
Yes.
Andrew Staff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, awesome. Okay, department head, committee chaplain? There we go.
Good one. Uh, Will Langley, road commissioner, uh, went out Monday, we did some patching on Monday, um, and everything, uh, we got that done. Uh, I got a, Jennifer gave me an email from the, actually from the, uh, uh, ground and they're doing the work. I gotta go out and re-mark all the dig safes again, they're, uh, dig safe, um, expired, so I gotta go out this week, you know, and, uh, I just told the guy there I was going to just do it again, so there's no issue. So I'm going to go out mark those again probably tomorrow morning. And then, uh, like I said, last week, we're going to get started on county road next week. Um, we're going to get the culverts changed, I talked to the paving company today, we got a date of May twelfth or fourteenth, they're going to come and start grinding, so.
County road.
County road, they're going to grind that. They get some, uh, state work they got to do right in town and, uh, in over Lebanon, so hopefully by the time they get that done, they're going to come back to Ross, get county road, pack road done and put those to bed, that's the plan right now.
What are they going to do to the pack road?
No, we got to.
They won't officialize?
Yeah, we got to finish servicing it and, uh, everything, so that's, that's the plan right now, so. I'll keep you updated on that.
Cool.
And we did put a blurb, we put a blurb together, we've got it advertised on the website and whatever, and social media about county roads, so.
Yeah.
Good idea.
That's the first half of county road, right?
What's that?
First half of county road.
No, this is the last section.
Last section, okay.
Yeah, you're shutting the whole thing down.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, anybody else, I don't see anybody, nope, okay, I guess we'll move on for no old business, new business. What if a referendum election?
Okay, so anytime the select board, um, instruct the clerk, put a secret ballot, um, on a referendum, you have to sign what they call an order, it's all typed up for you. Um, the question you guys approved last week to see if the town will vote to continue with the New York County Sheriff's contract in conjunction with the town's Chapley and to raise and appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for action share of the contract deputy cost and new deputy vehicle purchase. So there is an order, um, there's a little blurb up top, Tom, somebody needs to read.
So we have one of these for each question?
That's, yeah, that's the only question, though. You guys, um.
Yeah, the stuff's been moved.
You moved it, yeah, yes, yeah.
So, um.
The motion is the order there, that's written up in the first couple of sentences.
And this will be held when?
June tenth.
And it's the only question on the ballot?
Yes, in addition to the candidates, so.
And I know you mentioned this, it's now just sinking in that, uh, we have one question and asking people out, come out and vote on one.
Well, they have to come out to vote on the candidates anyways, it's going to be on the same ballot.
Okay.
So it'll have it on the same piece of paper.
Thank you, okay.
Do we have to make a motion on this? I make a motion, we signed the order for the referendum vote.
Seconded.
All in favor?
I guess I took it out of order, didn't I?
Sorry.
And, uh.
So it's possible we'll have some other referendum questions, they're just not going to make the June, tonight's the deadline.
Okay, thank you.
So if possible, we'll do the lease for the car and the ambulance, you guys will sign down the road, whichever way you want to do that.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, I guess we'll move on. Above and beyond catering liquor license.
So a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned to you the clerk's dinner that is tomorrow night, um, and I told you that a guest speaker from the State of Maine Liquor was coming down, that they had a new portal. So going forward, um, none of your liquor licenses will require a select board signatures. Um, instead, they're all, um, submitted to the State of Maine electronically. Um, the towns print off this application, uh, we're allowed to add our own requirements such as the fee and the liability insurance. Once we have all of those, um, we're going to make a motion on it the same way that you would, there's no signature. I then go back to the portal and enter the date that you guys approved it, type in the town's information, um, and go from there. So, uh, this one is for, you can still review this, this is for, um, a wedding that's going to be held on May, it's May tenth, May tenth at the Everly. All the information is on the back.
What is the, what is the benefit of the state getting involved in this?
Well, the state is just confirming that the person serving the liquor has a valid State of Maine liquor license.
Something they've always been doing.
Always has.
Yeah, so we're, we've been the middle man.
Absolutely.
I've been saying we're in line for why we even bother doing this.
And even if we don't approve it, the state still does.
Yeah, it's happened.
It's more, it's just, uh, no signature, just a motion. It's more of a information to let you know that a liquor event is going to be going on in your town.
Does this, um, also include like release and air tales?
Uh, those will be, yep. But we'll still have a public hearing, nothing will change on our process, it's just how we submit the information. On the back, David, is the actual event.
On the back, I'll have to find it. Want to make a motion?
Um, I move to approve, is that what it is?
Above and beyond catering.
I'm moving to approve above and beyond catering liquor license for, uh, for the event taking place on May tenth, twenty twenty-five at the Everly.
Seconded.
All in favor?
And we do, um, a lot of liquor one-day events for, um, above and beyond catering there. Uh, Sam was a very popular, well-known establishment, so.
Okay, ambulance bid package specs.
Alright. Three of ours, so pass those down. This one, um, yeah.
Make sure you keep.
Tape one and pass the rest down.
They're all.
What's that?
They're all individuals.
Make sure you take the right lens and pass the other ones down.
So this one is.
Okay, I'll take the one with the statement.
Well, this one, here, David, you take this one, this one's got a missing page, so I'll send you another one, but pass those down, you got them, David.
Okay.
So, um.
It's like a missing page.
Yeah, we'll give them another one. So this is, um, seventy-two, seventy-four page packet, um, a couple of things to go over with you. Uh, Wayne came in, uh, him and I reviewed it, um, we were lucky enough to find an electronic copy of the two thousand and seventeen ambulance process. So that's why you have it so quickly. Uh, he took the packet out and he went through it page by page and made some minor changes to it, um, but he's happy with it the way it is. We're going to put a cover sheet on the front, um, so I guess the question is, do you want to take the time to review all of the specs that he's requesting? Or are you happy with me putting a cover sheet on the front and go ahead and getting it advertised?
I mean, I, this is all French to me.
Yeah.
I was, I was going to say, when you went through this with him, was there anything that stuck out to you?
No, this is the same, same packet that we used back in seventeen, which is some updated information.
You know, one of the reasons why, uh, I think they wanted any ambulance of the same, um, right word, configuration as that current, because of, uh, ease of training and so on, is this proposed to be, have the same equipment or type of equipment? Is there any additional equipment in here, any new equipment, and if so, what is it?
So what's different on this one, um, is the, the stretcher, the, um, there's two pieces of, with the striker, yeah, there's two pieces of equipment that we bought after the fact for that one. He's added those two in.
So some.
Other than, right, so other than that, they are identical, he did mention that there might be some models.
The, he, from what it says here, it looks like they go from a diesel to a gas, which is cool.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, he made a few upgrades, but overall it's the same machine. He changed, he said the lights may have changed some, um, there's a key lock system that's a little different, but overall it's the same name, it's, yeah. But it was the striker, Ed, do you remember what the other piece of equipment that we added to was?
Was it that automatic, uh, automatic D fit unit?
Not the D fit, the, um.
The compression.
Oh, the, yes.
I can't remember the name of it.
Robin, what's the, the name?
Lucas device.
Lucas device, I remember that.
Yes.
Yeah, so Lucas device in the striker. Everybody's, she's making hand signals.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
Alright, so I'm happy to send that, you that electronically, but we'll work on the cover sheet, oh yeah, if you don't want them.
Yeah, I'm not.
I'll keep mine, I'll keep all the stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, so him and I will work, I figured we'll probably have it out to bid for about three weeks, give the companies a chance, because we want this whole packet back, so.
What companies do you think he'll, they'll get bids from?
Um, I mean, we're hoping to get bids from, you know, of course, at least three, but we're going to send it out to numerous companies and see when it comes back.
I just love a company that are.
We know that there's at least two that are interested in bidding, um, but there are at least three or four in New England that should, should show some interest based on the last time we went out.
Awesome, that's good to know.
Yeah, so we'll start working on that.
Awesome, okay. Bridging Culvert Capital Fund Expenditure.
Alright, so Mr. Langley is going to join us, um, a few weeks ago, uh, at one of your meetings when we were going over the warrants, um, we had conversations, I'm trying to find the date of the meeting.
March fifth.
What was it, March fifth, thank you. So March fifth, which was a little ways, a little while ago, we were going over the warrant articles, Mark Roy had made a recommendation to you guys about some of these, um, fund expenditures and possibly dissolving them, putting some on the warrant.[1729.71] fund expenditures and possibly dissolving them, putting some on the warrant, and we had a lengthy conversation, Will learned for the first time, about this Bridge and Culvert account. There was a lengthy discussion that kinda went in different directions, we talked about lots of different things that we could expend out of it, the guardrails came up, other parts for road bridge came up. It was, there's a lot of us talking in different, different directions, Will got something a little differently out of it, we did review it again tonight, so today, so we were on the same page. But at the end of the day, he had some guardrails put in the Hopper Road in the area, and he's hoping to expend out of that account. He understands that the board going forward needs to make a clear motion in advance to spend out of these accounts, he just mistook what was said.
Well, there's another step we missed too.
The bid?
Well, no, so.
Or no, we don't want.
So we don't have this issue again, you know, normally when we have projects of this magnitude, we're supposed to be coming to us saying, yeah, this is what we're doing, if that happened, we would've told you, you could've taken it out of that account, or you couldn't have, so.
Yeah, we have def, we definitely missed the, so the road committee ordinance, road commissioner ordinance, you know, has some areas in there that we certainly let lax. And one of those is the actual, you know, some of those projects, you know, it's in there that you must do these things in advance, and I think that everybody's been a little laxed on that, but.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We haven't really been.
Scope of work, exactly.
But if we, if we did.
But it is an ordinance, technically.
Because we've been enforcing it, it should be the job of the road commissioner to know their duties and responsibilities.
Right. So what we have is C A Newcomers Suns, and I guess, so it's twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, it's furnished and installed, two hundred linear feet, I'm guessing, DOT type three C sealed beam guardrails with delineators, reflectors, and terminal ends. Is this something that we go out to bid? I guess that's my first question from administration.
Why wouldn't?
Do we not have other companies?
I took that company, also, I'm gonna come look at this job, I usually have mainline fence do all my work, but they don't send people out anymore, and I wanted them, just the way that curve is down there, I wanted them to put their eyes on it before I measure it, take pictures, and I told the guys, no, I need you to come out and look at this, there's a good corner here, and they, they called me back, so. I, so they sent me, well, I'll call C A Newcomers Suns, and like I said, that guy came out last fall, we were gonna do it last fall, we ran out of time, well, he ran out of time, and then we made it work this spring. Besides that, mainline fence, it was only two guys that.
So we should get in the habit, because it's town policy, and I know it's one more step for you, but it's to protect you and the board.
I thought that we had waived that.
But is that for every single road commissioner project, period? I mean, that he never has to go out to bid? I mean, it was, it was discussion, you're right.
We, we, but the problem was, was.
The bid pad, I think, I, I think we did waive the bid pad, because when he does culverts, some of those are over.
Well, that was the problem, if you went out and bought ten thousand dollars worth of culverts, it was ten thousand dollars worth of culverts, which was over three thousand, three thousand five, I don't know.
Well, I think over, yeah, I think over five thousand.
So I thought.
I can find the, I can find the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
So what is the idea that he never has to go out to bid for anything?
Well, we still, we still do, like certain, like I sand, the pavement. Yeah, I, I think the only thing I recommend is, you know, I mean, when you spend thirteen, fifteen thousand dollars, you know, at least have something in hand, some quote, you know, but I, I go back and see, I thought we changed it up, so.
I'll find it, but.
We still had the scope of work, that we had.
The scope of work's different, that's, you have to authorize that.
Well, that's an ordinance, right.
Well, we didn't have that with us either.
Yeah, yeah, well, we didn't give that either, yeah, but I thought we had changed it, and we, we, we just can look that up.
Will, it sounds like you're bidding some projects.
Oh, yeah, yeah, like.
And so how do you understand which ones you do and go?
Well, no, no, not projects, we don't bid projects, like you mean, like certain, like our sand.
We go and bid for paving and sand, that's it, but the question is, what about material that he's using, or material he's having to buy?
Well, wait a minute, if. I guess the question is, what are your bidding guidelines? When do you bid something?
Usually when we do something in bulk, like you could bid this, I guess, but usually the only thing I really.
No, I, no, I, I, look, there ought to be, if there isn't, there ought to be clear policy about when you bid, when you don't need to bid. And if there's a judgment about deviating from that, I think that requires a discussion with the board. But there ought to be clear policy about, and, and it may not be aligned totally with the town's bidding policy, this may be a unique area, and perhaps it needs its own policy. But there clearly ought to be a policy, and if you're gonna deviate it from it, I think you need to come to the board. And if we, if you think the town's policy isn't appropriate, for whatever reason, then I think we should develop one for this area. And, you know, if something's gonna be fifteen thousand dollars, should we expect to bid or not? I'm not weighing in on what those thresholds ought to be, but I, I just would like to know, as opposed to it being kinda loosey-goosey, which is why it is now.
Right, because we have to be able to, we have to be able to notify the treasurer, because she doesn't know what to do when it comes in, I mean, she has a new treasurer here, she's, she's like, you know.
And we're gonna be expanding to the public as well.
What do we do with the tree cutting?
I've just got prices on that.
Well, we went out.
Like three, right?
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Several years ago, we went out to bid, and we got a couple of companies that were interested in.
How much is the summertime, these are all under the summer budgets?
Well, this one, I mean, summertime.
Well, this one was not, because.
Summertime is around, what, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Per, per, per district?
Hundred thousand, yeah.
So it's a couple hundred thousand dollars?
So David, I'll find the minutes and find out exactly what the clarification is, and then, then we'll revisit whether or not you have to go forward.
And I, I get what Tom's saying, because the thing is, is, so, and I'm sure you did this with good faith, I know what it's like.
I'm not, I'm not challenging anything, you know, it's just, we all need to know what the rules are, and we follow them until we make an exception. Because otherwise, it exposes everyone to questioning about, well, why'd you do it here and not do it there?
And, and, and honestly, it, you too exposes you, because it makes it look like, you know, you know, the good old boy system, I hired this guy, I can do my body, you know, you, you, you get the prices in, it covers you.
And we see that, I mean, the fire sheet has come before us several times, and you've probably been present saying, you know, this Lucas device can only be made by this person, he just gets a waiver, and it's not a big deal, you know, because there's like, because like this, there's no other company out there, so.
I think a lot of this could be resolved by coming to us when the project needs, it's gonna be done.
Right, the scope, we could have.
Scope, and then we could've gone through it, and if you said, I can't find anybody to bid this, so like, yeah, obviously, a change can be made, but.
I just want that statement.
Yeah.
I want that statement made and clarified, and not try to go back a year from now and say, hey, why didn't you bid this? Well, I, I don't know, it was this or that, and it, it, it gets very difficult. Will, what do you think of this, what I'm saying?
Yeah, I guess, just moving forward, I guess I need, so we, like talking like culverts, you know, like.
Well, you gotta get back on the scope of, you know, get back to the ordinance, and that might cover a lot of this.
Right, like, any, like.
Your projects are your projects, that's already approved by town meeting, that's that, it's, you know.
Wait a minute, wait, but it is a project approved by town meeting, it doesn't mean it doesn't need to be bid.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about the, the scope of work, when you come to us and tell us what your scope of work is.
I'm talking about bidding.
Okay, yeah, I mean, like the special projects, like I already laid that out, so I wouldn't, don't think, I wouldn't have to come here with a scope of project, scope of work for like my, like the Lebanon Road project and the hall. But like, you know, all in my summertime work, like if I'm gonna go ditch like, you know, up on San Pedro for a couple of days, I'd come, I'll bring the scope of work to you guys the week before, this is what I'm gonna do, and. I think we just, used to just, oh, okay, and.
There are two issues here, scope of work, bidding, approval of that, and what I'm talking about is, is authorization to expand with a particular vendor. Bidding, when is bidding required or not? And I just want clarity on that, I think you need it, and we need it, and the town ought to know what it is as well. And so I'm not trying to specify what it ought to look like, but I think we need to do that.
Current practice is that you, either you follow the town acting purchasing policy, or you get a waiver from the board.
We, I know we had deviated from that, for that super reason, because he was getting confident from doing his job, so if we.
You're gonna look into that.
Whenever we do it, ought to be practical, and we, you know, it ought to be workable.
Right, yeah, I mean, we're usually, I mean, we, in the past, like we always do a scope of works, I mean, do we wanna do it for like everything, like sweep in, like, I mean.
I think what we were talking about, maintenance is maintenance, you know, sweeping, cold patching, you know, cutting trees, whatever. It's, it's when you get into projects where you're gonna be ditching out a thousand feet of road, this and that, I mean.
No, I, I.
That's only because the road commissioner ordinance says that.
And it does say on here, not to, not to keep going back to whether or not the board has the authority to waive the policy, because I, we'll look for that, David, but in the ordinance, it says that all material must be purchased in accordance with the act of purchase, act of purchasing policy, so if that's the ordinance, we may not have the authority to deviate against it. But we have to change this ordinance as well, if you go from two to one commissioners, because the three-year pieces in here.
I told everybody back in the day not to vote for that ordinance in the first place, so.
Do you, do you, I think I know the answer to this, but do you prepare a plan for summer maintenance?
Yeah, I gave you guys my plan.
Okay, and when we review that, should we be indicating at that time what needs the scope of work and what needs to be bid? So we have that discussion right there, and then you ought to have an idea of what it's gonna cost, and that would provide him clarity so he could go about his work.
With that, we can give him a list of certain items, you know. Guardrails, you know, whatever, like being. So we'll figure it out.
Yeah, and the scope of work might have been attached to some old warrant articles and not in the ordinance, I mean, I was getting it quickly and couldn't find the scope of work, so I think that that might have been in some old ordinances. Do you know what I mean, that's, that they were, X amount was approved with scope of work, so it might not pertain, so.
Yeah, because I know, I know at one point, we were having him come in and tell us how much it costs, and so that, I thought it was silly as hell.
Right, I think it might have been in previous warrant articles, so we'll do some digging.
Okay.
Might not have to do those, but we still gotta figure out the bidding. So back to this for tonight, so if you recall back to that March 5th meeting, like I said, there was a lot of talk about what could possibly be spent out of this Bridge Culvert Capital Fund. He inadvertently put the cart before the horse, and would like to spend this twelve thousand nine nine ninety out of the Bridge and Culvert rather than the summer accounts. Currently, it has a hundred and five thousand eight fifty-nine in it, he's also scheduled to meet with me tomorrow to start looking at the road bridge engineering reports that you guys have recommended. We have some from eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one, totally different companies, so he's gonna be bringing that before you assume as well.
My question is, you said rather than spending it out of summer maintenance, was this already budgeted under summer maintenance, do you have that budget line for the railings in there, or?
No, I was just gonna wing it pretty much.
He spent the money based on the March 5th meeting, thinking that that's what he took out of the meeting.
That's a really honest answer.
If you did budget it for those railings to come out of summer maintenance.
Oh, yeah, because I didn't know about beforehand, yeah, before the March 5th meeting, yes, I was gonna take it out of the.
Oh, you were going to.
Yeah, I thought you'd had it in the summertime.
So my concern is, if you make it out of this budget, then you're gonna have that excess amount in summer maintenance for that project.
So you were gonna do guardrails.
For another project, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna do regardless. Then, then, that night, that's why I said that night, we had the money, so I was like, wow, why am I gonna take it out of my summertime, we have it right there.
All of a sudden, you got free money.
Well, it's plenty of work to be done, but what do you guys think?
Dan, I mean, have you got plenty of work to do?
Oh, yeah, I got plenty of work to do, I mean, unless we don't.
For fifteen thousand dollars, we're gonna go.
I mean, we're not gonna get road bridge done.
We were talking about resolving it in the first place, I mean, but.
No, it's fine, next time, just, you know, make sure you talk to us.
Just, just do us all a solid, make sure there's not a huge surplus of money left in your account.
But now that's summer maintenance, all right, so looking for a motion to approve the twelve thousand nine nine ninety out of the Bridge and Culvert Capital Fund.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Twelve nine nine ninety.
All in favor?
So the small amount of flag that we've already paid out of your summer maintenance.
Next time you wanna spend out of that.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it was my, like, I understand that at the meeting, I, I felt we were all, I took it as we were all set, but that's my, so, all right.
We get it.
Moving forward on all.
Anything other than your summertime and wintertime, you might wanna call and make sure.
All right, all right, thank you.
The guardrails do look nice, by the way, it's gonna be a little tight floundering out through there, but.
I had it rolled back, well, that's, that's what the state wanted, so then we're gonna smack our hand again here, when they come back and inspect it, but.
No, but they, I can see where that's gonna help.
Oh, yeah, they should, they should be good, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, please. We're, okay, executive session, we are probably coming out with a decision, so we will, I'll go to public comment, so do I hear a motion?
I move to go into executive session MRSA four five six eight dash one personnel at six forty-six P M.
Second, all in favor? Motion.
I move to come out of the executive session MRSA four five six eight one dash personnel at six fifty-four P M.
Second, all in favor? Okay, we have a decision.
Yeah, we're gonna end appointments.
Okay, yes, we'll go down to a point.
Ed, do you wanna start with the first one?
So, as you know, we've been looking for a constable, our other constable, Bob Anderson, resigned, retired, I guess is the proper way to what it is. If you're only in something for a few years, you resign, he's been in it so long, he retired. So, and once again, I wanna thank him for his years of, of service in that, being our constable. So we had a, we put it out, we needed a new one, we did some interviews, and we had four initially that put in for it, two of them did back out for different, various reasons. We interviewed two great candidates, but we brought it down to, to one in particular, and I guess with that, I'll read the appointment. So, certificate of appointment, selectman's office, municipality of Acton, Maine, two, Bernard Brewder the third. I guess actually, I probably should see if the board wants to, no, that's how we do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. The selectmen of municipality of Acton do in accordance with their provisions of the laws of the State of Maine hereby appoint you as constable within and for the municipality of Acton until six thirty, twenty twenty-six, given this day our hand, sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Sorry, Bernard. No, thank you.
Well, I have to say, we'd feel a little better if you had just said that there were four applicants.
It still came down to.
We hit it on.
The other one passed away.
Okay, so more appointments, all right, so, and we'll pass those down to Dan. We have spent an excessive amount of time tracking and tracing the Conservation Forest Committee. We went back to two thousand and sixteen, when this committee was originally merged together, and the seven members were appointed. We went all the way back, we've done some, some cleanup, some clarification, but at the last Forest Conservation Committee meeting, we passed this out, I believe, Dan, from speaking to the chairman, this went around.
Yep.
Everybody agreed and understood where it was at, so Michael Benjamin and John Fatula were just re-elected, so those are two of our three-member terms. Kelly Collins and Jill Ruma, although he is not taking his oath, were previously elected through twenty twenty-seven. It's, it's always difficult when someone either takes a position, doesn't get sworn in, resigns halfway through, they wanna be appointed, but just for a short amount of time to try it out. What we're recommending to you tonight is James Chadmore, who was on the committee, and Brian White.
Do you wanna, sorry, I didn't catch this earlier, I think it was Ryan White?
Okay.
Uh, not Brian.
Okay, and we'll have to.
I'll just drop that.
So we'll, let's make a motion on Ryan, and we'll have it fixed before you leave.
Okay.
So Mr. Chadmore and Mr. White were both appointed through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five from this office for previous vacancies, regardless of how they got there. Their terms should be through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, to stay in line with the original June of sixteen. So Dan, I'm hoping is gonna make a motion for those two people through that date, and we will be all squared up, and I will ask Cheryl to make that correction.
Okay, do, okay, so I move to appoint James Chatterton and Ryan White to the Forest Conservation Committee effective on April, today, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, serving until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second, all in favor?
So are we still gonna sign this one?
Uh, no, we're, she's making a new one as we speak. And then. Oh, yeah, maybe that's what I was thinking. So the last appointment that you have in front of you is, we do have two zoning board of appeals applicant, uh, two zoning board of appeals alternate positions open, and we were able to fill one of them tonight, and Tom's about that.
Oh, okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Daniel Archibald to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate, alternate member for, until, for a period ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-nine.
Yes.
All in favor?
He was, and originally, he wasn't interested in the regular seat, so we did reach out to him.
Traveling and stuff.
Yeah, so, all right, Cheryl's typing that up, so. All right, I have more appointments. Um, matter of seconds, probably by the time you get through public comments, somebody can say so.
Well, there's no public comments.
There's no public comments tonight, is there?
Sure there is.
Hi, George Bach, I think a lot of you know that, that planning board is here and here to my heart, that was how I first got Acton. That was how I first got Acton, so, when I saw this, and I'm sure you've all seen it, but I think this is fabulous. Uh, in the reporter, if you look on it, at it, anybody, on page five, under Acton, there's a great picture of our CEO and our deputy CEO.
Right.
It's, it's a great picture in there, so everybody should, um, just have a look at it, you know, it's really, um, you know, a, a cool thing, and well, the other thing is, um, he and I come from the same hometown, he's a clan, not in here.
He did tell me that.
That's funny. Awesome, thank you for sharing that.
Alright.
I guess I should be careful now to, when I speak, to make sure that it's clear, I'm speaking only for myself and not as the constable. Um, and you know, I, I don't wanna belabor matters, but, um, but I feel the need to say this tonight. There was a warrant finance committee meeting on March tenth, that Mr. McGurty referenced on March twelfth because of some of the comments that were made on the, on the tenth, and then on, if you watch the March seventeenth meeting of warrant finance, one of the members says that none of that happened, what was discussed on the twelfth, didn't happen at the March tenth meeting, um, so I guess, I don't know if that's local news or why, but I have watched the March tenth meeting video, and I share Mr. McGurty's concerns, that he shared at the March twelfth meeting. And so, based on, you know, the denial of all that, March seventeenth, and then, based on some of what was said at our town meeting this past Saturday, that's what prompted me to make these comments, rather than just letting it go. So, I wanna thank everyone that was involved in this year's budgetary process, and I especially wanna thank those who took the time to actually understand the budgetary information that other people worked so hard to provide to them. I'm talking about people who understand that the fire chief's exclusion from certain aspects of the new emergency management plan resulted from the chief's request that they be excluded, and not from the, um, select board's overreaching for power and control, as was suggested. I'm citing people who can grasp that no one was disrespectful or disloyal to Road Commissioner Langley in putting forth a warrant article placing winter road maintenance out to bid, because Mr. Langley, in fact, requested that this be the way that it's done. I'm recognizing those who get it, that the select board did not make a forty million dollar error this past year, and that this has been confirmed and explained by Tom McGurty, who is indisputably a financial expert, and by Mark Roy, a certified public accountant, and I guess what I would say to this is, we can explain it to you, but we can't understand it for you. I'm talking about people who recognize that while both the school department and town employees receive discounted insurance premium incentives for longevity of service, that those employees still pay the entire premium for their spouses and children, and that town employees still pay more of their premium than do school department employees, and not the other way around, as was suggested at the March tenth warrant finance committee meeting. Thank you to those who exercise financial inquiry and scrutiny equally across departments and free of gender bias, those who trust our five-member select board to manage a fifty thousand dollar emergency contingency fund without further advanced oversight, and who recognize that the warrant finance committee is advisory-only and does not govern the town. Thank you to those doing the heavy lifting and contemplation to understand that a three and a half percent board of selectmen salary increase, in line with that applied across the board to all other town employees, can indeed cost four and a half percent when including the one percent Family Medical Leave Act tax. In closing, my gratitude and respect for the process are indeed sincere, and are exceeded only by the hope that next year's process can be factually based, duly considered, and equally and uniformly applied across all town departments and all town employees. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for sharing.
All right. Thank you. Okay, um, anybody else? I wonder what's taught that? Okay, um.
Move to adjourn at seven oh seven P M.
Second. All in favor? Good night, everybody.